Good morning. Thank you for everyone, thank you all for being here this morning. If you'll please take your seats. We're gonna get ready to get started. If we need some chairs, I do have them. Come on in everybody. You're all welcome to some coffee in the back. Please grab a cup of coffee. And take a seat, we'll be getting ready to get started here so they can hear our speaker today. And I want to thank everybody for being here, my name is Alex Rivera. On behalf of the Garcia family, the owners of the Oxnard Cafe, we're very happy to introduce the candidate for Commerce District 26 of Ventura County, Antonio Salvato Jr. Antonio, thank you. Welcome to Oxnard, Alex is here for tonight.
Thank you very much for coming out. Buenos dias a todos, muchas gracias y muchas gracias. Mi corazón está en Oxnard. My love is in Oxnard. I actually live here. I live in Thousand Oaks, where I live this year. I live in Ventura County. I've been living here for over 10 years now. I'm proud to be in Ventura County, running for Congress. I tell you man, I'm gonna be very passionate about this. Because this is not about me. My campaign has never been about me, it's about you. It's about you guys. It's about your children, it's about your future. So let's talk about a little bit what I'm trying to do here. I just said I've been living in Ventura County for over 14 years. My little boy was born in Las Rosas. My kids went to school here. They graduated from here. I take pride in Ventura County. I take pride in living here. I take pride in the community. I take pride in the Latinos. I take pride in the police officers. I take pride in actually living here. And I understand what the farmers need. I understand the regulations. I understand that this state is falling into the ocean. And that's the truth. That is the truth guys. And I don't want that to happen. I don't want to be scared anymore. I don't want to be put in this place like the Democrats do all the time. And one of the things that I hate, that's why I wanted to come to Oxnard. And I'm gonna be in Oxnard every single week. Is because I see the Democratic Party using Latinos for their own good. As slaves. As pawns. The people that get picked and choose. You vote for me, because we'll give you this, this, and that. But what have the Democratic Party done for you? What have they done for the state of California? We're number one in homelessness. Regulations over the roof. Taxes. Unemployment. Skyrocket. What have they done for you? What have they done for the Latino communities in Oxnard? Let's talk about Oxnard specifically. Have they built businesses here? Have they been able to protect you? By pushing policies that are protecting you? No, Ms. Julia Browning, Ms. Santa Monica, Julia Browning, who doesn't even live in this community. Lives in Santa Monica. She's passed policies like AD109, Prop 47, and 57. There's more prisoners, more criminals running around in your neighborhoods than in prisons, thanks to her. Those are the facts. Forget about the parties, okay, for a second. Forget about the Republicans and the Democrats. Let's talk about human beings. They've taken away God away from our schools. They want to take the flag away. They want to take the Constitution. Our 27 amendments are destroying one after the other. Because they want your control. So this is our time to get it back. Ms. Julia Browning's been running this district for six years and she's done nothing. That's a fact. It's not me being mad, you know, I'm the guy running against the party. No, 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 no. Those are the facts. I've been going to Congress every month. I already started the process of working with people in Congress and the community. I already put this, Ventura County, on the map nationwide. Because I'm proud of it. Finally, the rest of the country knows about Ventura County. Every state that I get, you know, I'm in contact with every state. I get donations from all of them. 50 states. They all know about Ventura County. They all know about Oxnard. They all know about Thousand Oaks. They all know about our beautiful county. They want to help us. The entire country. Thanks to me, because I am proud of it. So I need you guys to step up this time. We have a representative, who has done zero in Congress, in almost six years. And she works for you. All she does is comes here and says, "Well, I've done so much for the veterans." No, you did not. I can tell you why. Because she was able to get funding for the veterans last year, thanks to the President. In almost six years, that was the only time. So she's using you. She's using the veterans, she's using the Latinos for our own goodness. That's wrong. Because you're not being honest with you guys. When was the last time you were able to talk to her? When was the last time you actually talked to Ms. Julia Browning, called her? When was the last time you saw her? Most people don't even know what she looks like. Living in Santa Monica. With her liberal friends. Passing liberal laws that are endangering your community. This child right here is endangered. Because of things that she's passing in Sacramento. Her future. My kid's future. Do we have choices anymore? Do we have choices in schools? Do we have choices in calling our representatives and saying, "Listen, you know, my kid, I need help. I need help in those regulations. I need help with my farmers. Can you do something about it?" "No," so hang on. "I'll call you later." She's too busy. And let's talk about immigration. A touchy subject, right? I'm an immigrant. I came here, proud of being American. I moved from Italy in 1985 with my family, searched for a better future. And I'm proud of it. I waited in line, we saved money. We actually ran out of money, had to go back to Italy for one more year to save more money to come back the second time. I could have done, I didn't have to do it that way. I could have taken advantage of the American people. I could have taken advantage of the laws. And not that things legally, but no, I did it legally. You know why? Because I'm proud. I want to get back to my country. I want to take, take, take. We gotta stop that. This country's good. It's good to us. It's good to our family. Let's give it back. Let's get back our love, back to our country. Let's get back to our Constitution. Let's get back to common sense. Let's make it pro-business. Oxnard should be the number one vacation spot in California. Why isn't? Why do we make excuses? It should be. We have everything we need here. We have beautiful mountains. We have beautiful oceans. We have so much. We have an airport. We have things. We have a great community like you guys. But nobody knows anything about it. The crime is going up. Low-income housing is going up. You can't open business in Ventura County. It's too hard. Dole left. A thousand people from Enjem left. People are leaving the state and not coming back. In the last 10 years, we lost a million workers and business owners. And they're not coming back. Why? Because these politicians, the Sacramento, or any Washington are against your success. Plain and simple. They want to hold you down. The more turmoil, the higher taxes, the more homelessness you have in your community, it's better for the Democratic Party. That is a fact. You want the Democrat of the past? JFK was a good Democrat. And look what happened there. We gotta be honest with ourselves. We gotta be honest with the American people. We are not doing enough in Sacramento. And this representative who's there, who's here, saying she's from Ventura County? She hasn't done anything for you. You need something better. You need somebody who walks down the streets that's proud and say, "You know what? I'm with you guys. I'm with her. Call me anytime. I'll pick up the phone. My office is right here. 24 hours a day, 7 days a week." That's what kind of job this is. Because I gotta be in Washington in November, once we get elected. And it takes two years before the next election. So I already started working with congressmen. Like Congressman Gus P. DiRatti's out of Tampa. Was with the Veterans Affairs. We need to do more for the veterans, sure. But we also need to be out there and talking to the people. And finding out what they need. See, my thing was, if I'm gonna get into politics, I'm gonna treat it differently. I'm gonna listen to your need. I'm gonna listen to your problems. And I'm gonna do something about it. But based on what you need. Not on why I come in with it. I don't want to be the guy that says, "I have my whole team here. And we came up with a good plan. We got everything set for you guys. You have nothing to worry about." No. I go to your house. We have dinner. We talk about the issues. And we find a common ground that we can work together that is best for you and your family and your teachers and your community. All of us, together. And you know this state's falling apart. You know it is. Nobody else wants to talk about it. Have you been to San Francisco lately? Have you been to downtown LA? People are robbing homes because of this AD109 prison early release. They're robbing so many homes in ALA County that they're coming out here. Because these are new homes. We haven't robbed these homes yet. So let's go up there. We're gonna be out in about a month anyway. Tell me if that makes any sense. Tell me if you're safer because of that. Stop voting for these kinds of policies. Stop doing it. You have to be introduced and know what's going on. I'm available. I'm one of you guys. I'm an immigrant. I'm a proud American. But I'm also for common sense. And I want you guys to ask me any questions you want from this point on. Because it's about you, it's not about me. Let's get this together, let's win in November. Let's do it for the American people. Let's do it for our community that we care about so much, okay? Thank you, God bless you.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hello, good morning everybody. My name is Dr. Martinez. I was born and raised here in Oxnard, California. And I have a master's and a doctorate in clinical psychology. And as a mother, I am terrified about our current gun epidemic. It is an epidemic according to the American Psychological Association. And I just want to ask you about your stance on this. In a tweet of yours dated June 21, 2016, you stated, quote, "Remove all gun laws." Given the epidemic of gun violence, can you please provide details about your statement? To be clear, just like Obama was clear. I in no way am trying to take away everyone's gun rights. That would be an extreme view. But I do believe that laws must be changed to protect our children and all human beings. And all children, this is my child here. She's actually a little sick, so I kept her home from school. But I worry every day. And every mother that I've spoken to, whether they are Republican or Democrat, they are terrified. And we see this problem. And we are very concerned. The American Academy of Pediatrics, along with the American Psychological Association, have provided recommendations for gun safety and gun control. The American Psychological Association specifically has a task force delineating the research regarding gun violence from suicide, homicide, mass shootings, and other violent crimes involving guns. They report that there is a much higher probability that a child will be killed or will be hurt by having access to a gun at home than an intruder coming into a home. More specifically, it quotes, "Compared to other high-income countries, the U.S. by a substantial margin has the highest rate of firearm-related homicide, suicide, and unintentional death, and unintended injury among children and adolescents." Leading the American Academy of Pediatrics to conclude that, quote, "The absence of guns from children's homes and communities is the most reliable and effective measure to prevent firearm-related injuries in children and adolescents." They have also indicated that having access to a firearm is the common denominator in every firearm-related death or injury. The epidemic is being discussed as a public health issue. The American Psychological Association has provided this analysis of their research and data to Congress and the White House. Not only this administration, but the previous. Yet we know the NRA is a powerful source in controlling Congress. So why listen to the factual data and research, right? Trump alone received $30 million from the NRA to support his campaign. So we know where that experts, such as mental health providers and physicians stand. Do you consider the scientific research provided by these organizations, of which I am a member of, where do you stand on the topic of gun safety and control?
Okay, well first of all, I never said I don't want any gun laws whatsoever. That's definitely not me. I don't know where you pulled that out from. That's definitely not me. I'm a CCW owner, I'm for Second Amendment, very close to the Sheriff Department. And I've had guns my entire life. My kids know about them. And gun laws are very much, they're Let's talk about the issues here, okay? About guns and the whole problems with guns all of a sudden. We've had guns in this country for over 200 years. But all of a sudden now, it's a political thing, okay? What about all the deaths in Chicago that are happening every single day by guns? Nobody does anything about that. What about Kate Steinle? When she was murdered in San Francisco by a illegal immigrant? Did we talk about gun theft? Did we talk about his gun theft? No. So let's talk about the facts. We have a Second Amendment. We have laws. We have strict laws in California. We have the strictest laws in the country, in California. This is not about guns. This is about people. This is about common sense. This is about family. This is about God putting things in proper order. That's what I think we should do. Yeah, you want to talk, we should talk about the mental illness with people. We should do a lot more with that. That's why I started a program, a nonprofit program called True Hope Calling for addicts all over the country. A way to call and find help, 24 hours a day, with or without insurance. That's what I'm fighting for. You want to bring more gun laws? Yes. You want to take guns away from law-abiding citizens? You're gonna have a hard time doing that. We want to protect people. We want to protect our children. If we want to go back to the incident that happened in Florida, because this is what it's about in this particular moment. Authorities knew about it. Teachers knew about it. Kids knew about it. Nobody did anything about it. They were called to go to his house. They went to his house. They didn't do anything about it. So let's talk about this. I am for more gun laws. But in this particular case, gun laws wouldn't have helped anything because he went and bought a gun. Bought many. Yes, we have a gun problem. But we have to more show we have people, human beings, problems. And we gotta do something about it. But we gotta team up together with everybody, all the parties involved. To make sure that our kids and our schools are protected, at whatever cost. I'm suggesting having guards at schools. Why not? We have guards at banks. We have guards at airports. We have guards everywhere else. But we can't have guards protect our children? There's a school in New Mexico. Every teacher there has a permit to carry and conceal a weapon. And the kids, they asked, they did a percentage for all the kids in the school, "How do you feel like your teacher and your principal carry your weapon?" And they said, "I feel a lot safer. I don't have to worry about it. I'm protected." So yes. We have non-problems, but I think the human, the human problems that we have nowadays in this society, that's a society in the country. That's what the bigger issue is.
Excellent question, Dr. Martinez. Thank you very much. You're next.
My name is Lauren Marci Tener. I have a master's in public health. And thank you very much for inviting us to be part of this. And with Dr. Martinez, Dr. Martinez has brought a public health issue. Naturally, the public health issue is not about gun laws. It's about losing God and our family structure in the school system.
Amen to that.
I feel that, first of all, she's very safe with you. She's very safe with the bear. That is, my army, red. Yeah. And she's very safe with that. So I do feel that we, I am for gun laws. But I do not think that we should be removing the fact of having guns carry on. I do feel that a person needs to have background checks. And we need to be able to instruct our family members and give them safety at home. And safety in our schools. I do feel that it is important that we work with our people. And I do agree with you. We do not be, Oxnard does not want to be a laboratory for any politician in here. We need to be taking into consideration where we are immigrants or not. If we're migrants, migrants or not, we are people and we are voters. And we all need to be partaking on the vote, the voting right that we as citizens have. The vote is our voice. The vote is who we need to do. So through the faith, it's important for all of us all to be registered and to be able to exercise our rights. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, yes.
And I'm really sorry that you took off your child from school. But I know the reason why you did it. You wanted to make a point.
Actually, she's sick. And I have another baby home sick too. But yeah.
I'm glad to hear it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next question, right here. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Deborah Baker Shalala.
Hi.
Hi. And the one thing I wanted to observe here, and it's not my original thought, but it is that with the school shooting being so prominent, ask yourself how many school shootings have occurred in private schools and religious schools? The only one that did in recent memory is one about five years ago in LA. And that was an anti-Semi who shot up a Jewish school. Otherwise, the shootings happen in our public school systems. We have got to ask ourselves the question, what is wrong with our public schools? Not what is wrong with the gun laws in America.
You're right.
What I'm gonna say, what I'm wondering about is the fact that we are not allowing our teachers to teach our children. Because there's one way of teaching. It's a socialist way of teaching. It's the socialist way of dealing with the state of California. And that's not right. We were, you know, parents used to have a voice. Where parents used to have a problem with a teacher or the school, they would have a meeting. And then we would talk and say, "You know what? I need more from you, from my child." Those things don't happen anymore. You leave your child at school and for some miraculous reason, hey, it's up to you to decide. It's up to you to raise my kid. And they're not doing a good job. Our school system is failing our children. Every single day. All they do is get a pile and pile of work. Do it by yourself. Teacher's not available. Schools, after-school grown-ups are packed with kids. Not finding a way. Because we're teaching them a certain way. We don't have a voice. We can't explain. If you say something, you're called a bigot. If you call this, you're called a racist. If you go, that's gotta end. I want what's best for my child. I want school choice. If I don't agree with the way you're teaching my child, I don't want you to teach my child this way. You have that right. We're not in a communist country, guys. We're in a free country. Let's keep it free. I escaped communism. I don't want it here. And socialism is a way of communism. And they're doing it in the schools. They're already taking away the Bible from schools. Next is the American flag. Next is your child. I went to colleges. Kids don't have a choice to speak unless you agree with their party. And we saw in the last election. My daughter in high school, I had to pull her out of high school. She's homeschool now. Why? Because she couldn't speak her mind about who she liked as the next president. Doesn't matter who it is. But the teacher said, "You can't talk about President Trump." You know, a candidate Trump. You can't talk about it. Why? Those are the things that we're dealing with now. About anything, not just political stuff. It's gotta end. This is about the human, the future of this country and the humankind. So thank you for, yeah, thank you for all these great questions. Keep it coming.
Excellent, excellent, right here in the corner. In the bridge, your board.
My name is Irene Avila. I'm the Secretary of the Neighborhood Council, Columbia. I'm a domestic violence survivor. I'm a spokesperson for domestic violence. And your comment regarding illegal immigrants, you commented being a proud son of immigrants. My grandparents were immigrants. I'm trying to connect this with domestic violence. And I need you to hear me out on this. We recently had a murder in Oxnard, a year ago, of a woman who was gunned down, gun laws, by her husband. One thing that kept her from becoming a citizen was the threats and the fears that were subjected upon her by her husband. She wanted to be a citizen. But he controlled that of her. How many Latino immigrants or any other immigrants of any other group that are here illegally want to be citizens? But for one reason or another, are being threatened? They're being cornered? They're being controlled? They don't have the funds? We can't lump them all some and make them sound like they're not proud, as that was the word you used. There are plenty of immigrants who aren't proud. Unfortunately, a lot of them are not citizens. I know they want to be citizens.
Right.
But when you have somebody who's a victim of domestic violence and her spouse is keeping her from pursuing that dream, what is your answer to that?
My answer is that we have to follow the law. There's a difference between a legal immigrant who's coming here doing everything right and one is taking advantage of the American people and our American laws. There's a difference there. We have to follow the law. If you cross the line, you do something illegally. It doesn't matter what it is. It's against the law. And we, we, meaning the American people, shouldn't take the burden or pay for it. $26 billion we paid for immigration every single year in California. We spent $100 billion as a nation on immigration. So something's gotta change. Because people are living on the streets. Veterans are not being taken care of. Our schools are not working. But we're spending this kind of money in this direction. And let's talk, let's talk what's going on right now with the DACA situation. If you want, you know, that's included there as well.[1567.28] President Trump gave the Democrats a deal. Maybe you guys don't know about it. But he said, all your DACA recipients and children will have legal status. All seven hundred thousand, okay? And the Democratic Party last week said no. Okay, so if you want to talk about politicians and setting up things and boundaries, we have a president. You might not like him, whatever, but he gave them a deal. And they said no. So, we gotta start taking care of our community and we gotta make it easier for our people to survive. And people who are doing things illegally to actually take care of it legally, not illegally all the time. So, I'm very much against sanctuary cities. We should have a sanctuary country for our American people. I'm a dreamer. My family's a dreamer. And I could have taken advantage of this country, especially this time when we were at zero money, when we were trying to survive. But this country gave me an opportunity to survive and I became extremely successful because of this country. And I didn't take advantage of it. So, let's, let's put our heads in one basket for the American people. They should come first. Marissa Lopez, your next.
Thank you. Just gonna introduce myself. I'm Marissa Lopez. Thank you for coming here. I appreciate that you're holding a forum that's open to people from all different points of view. When I hear you speak, I take offense on a couple of fronts. The first one is that my husband is a teacher. He sees in a public school. He sees things firsthand and I hear one comment about that. Teachers aren't doing that. They're not giving us... Actually, they're on the front lines. They're working with our kids every day, not for very much aid, to do the job of raising our children for our future. And so, yeah, I do take offense when you say that. And it's very scary to, and I also have children that are in a public school who have been practicing active shooter drills. And it's a normal thing for them. That's pretty scary. That creates an environment of fear and it's something that I do not want. I heard you mention that you're not against gun control laws. But here's a quote from your Twitter feed. Remove all politicians. Obama, Hillary, send them to Gitmo. Remove all gun laws. Vote @RealDonaldTrump. Build the wall. Antonia Squalo Jr. That was your Twitter feed on July 21st, 2016. I'm glad that you've updated your mindset a little bit because I hear you now saying that you're for specific gun laws. I'd like to hear which ones you're specifically for. The ones that...
Gun laws haven't worked in Florida. Gun laws haven't worked in Florida.
I'm not asking about that. That's fine.
We can blame it on gun laws, but it's not gonna happen.
I was just asking. I'd like to know. I'm really interested in hearing. What specific gun laws you're, you would support? Is it background checks for who?
I support any gun laws.
So, no, no, not issue that long.
No, no, background checks and mental, mental illness. Background checks for any kind. Mental illness especially. We should be able to have the FBI do their job. And then the FBI did not do their job. We had gun laws, but nobody did anything about it. Nobody did anything about it.
So, to me, I'd just like to hear what specific gun laws, regardless of anything that has happened before, what specific gun laws do you support?
I support the bullets, the one that just passed right now for bullets registration. I support that. I support the magazine gun law that we have here in San, California. I support all of all. But we're talking about California, right?
No, it's for the entire country.
Well, that's the thing. State to state differ.
I understand that.
So, let's talk about California because I live here. I live here. We have the strictest gun laws in the country, in California. Correct? So, I support that. I support any, any more...
Do you support them as a federal, since you're running for a federal position? Do you support them?
I support it as a law.
For the federal government, so it'd be something...
Nationwide. Nationwide. But the only issue here is that we can't work with other states. That's the problem. That's why the FBI have issue. Because they don't work together simultaneously. I would fight for having gun laws and everybody included deal with the same issue. But we're not doing that right now. Look at Chicago. We're losing people every single minute. Excellent question. Thank you, Marissa.
My name is Marissa Lopez. I am the Chair of Columbia. You saying you're in this? I never see you walk down Cooper Road. Never. That's number one.
Mine, where I see it.
But let me finish. I never see you walk over here. I don't see you walking through my neighborhood that I'm very proud of. And then we are migrant people there.
Right.
These are the people who pick everybody's strawberries here. But once you're Republicans saying that they're stealing their jobs, I don't see you out there picking strawberries, sir.
Actually, I was there the other day.
Oh, no, no, no.
But anyway, I understand. I understand. I understand what you're saying, but let me tell you something.
You don't let me finish.
No, no, but I want to ask you the first question. Just ask me. So, why am I not here?
Yeah.
Because I am here, wearing a T-shirt and my sweatpants hanging out in the city roads. I'm here answering questions and I've been here. I've been running this campaign since last year. So, actually, before that, you wouldn't have seen me here because I wouldn't want to, you guys. But I can guarantee you one thing, and this is a fact. I'm here, a lot more than the representative you got in office right now. That's a sure thing. And I'm here with the American people.
You know, I see your board meeting at the Neighborhood Council meeting because I see them.
You see what?
Your representative. I see them at the Neighborhood Council and at the, at the Oxnard Council session. They're there. I see them. They ask me questions and I'm telling them, where were you? I don't see you at the City Hall.
I'm right here, right in front of you.
No, no, no. Where were you at those meetings?
You're talking about Ms. Julie Brown meeting the meeting?
No, no, no. I'm talking about you.
Talking about me?
Yeah, I'm talking about you. You said you're here.
I'm here, yeah.
I don't see you walking down the street.
I do, sir.
You know, sir?
No.
Okay.
But you know what?
There it is.
But we're here now.
Don't, don't talk about...
You're gonna see a lot of me. Don't worry about it. I'm gonna be around.
We will see you.
You're gonna see a lot of me. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next question. Good morning. My name is Renee Dehesa. I am a attorney in the community. I am a business owner. I am a property owner. I am well vested in this community for my entire life. Like you, I came from Mexico at the age of five in 1990, in 1985. Sorry, 1987, two years after you did. Like you, I became a naturalized citizen in the late 90s. And like you, I benefited from immigration laws that were friendly to immigrants. The amnesty that was in place at the time in the 80s and 90s has helped my family and your family come to the United States. Like you, I waited in line. And like you, I was undocumented while I waited in line. Because the way that our laws work is you come on a tourist visa, which I'm, I'm sure you did.
No, I didn't know.
To be able to stay, you're welcome.
I came here on a green card.
That's not the way it generally works, but that's okay.
No, that's, actually, it works. From Italy, it worked that way. We have to wait.
Oh, that's great. Because guess what? That's not how it works from Mexico. And that's not how it works if you're from Latin America. So, the fact that you came from Italy gives you an advantage over most of the people that have come and resided in this community.
How do we get an advantage? You know how long we have to wait? You're gonna get a call?
I'm not gonna go back and recite those immigration laws. But I want you to understand that the immigration laws that benefited you and I at the time are not the immigration laws that are in place today. And creating a wall that you propose, my President Trump does, would have kept immigrants like yourself out of this country. The immigrants that surround us today in the neighborhood, our business owners, our citizens, our students, they are vested in our community.
Okay, now let me say this because you brought up a good point. So, we have a million people who are coming here illegally, waiting in line through the process of getting a green card every single year. Should they wait last in line?
There's no line, okay?
No, no, there is a line.
There's no line.
There is a line because if you want to come here illegally. So, okay, so you can drive a car without a driver's license? Can you drive a car without a driver's license?
You can drive your car without a driver's license, yes. That's the stupidest question. Of course you can. You are not authorized to drive a car without a driver's license, right? Okay.
We just proved my point.
So, I just want, I just want to make clear that you're in a district that is heavily Latino. Where we have foreign-born citizens. Where we have worked very hard to create the community that we have today.
Right.
Where we uphold values, where we provide a sanctuary to our immigrants. Those are the values that we uphold.
Okay, so you're saying you want to, you want to allow sanctuary, but not American citizens?
Why should we vote for you when you do not uphold our values?
You know what I uphold? I uphold the Constitution of America.
Non-American citizens. You might want to read it.
I know the Constitution only works for American citizens. Yeah, only. Only, only. Go ahead.
Yeah. My name is Ronald Cunha. I'm also like you, I'm like another, another country, okay? You know how long do we have to wait just to fly away from my country and come here? It was over ten years, okay? Well, you cross the border and that's it. You are here. You know, there are laws that we have to obey if you want to go to the country. Our President Trump is building, is too short. That, that, that wall should be like double the size.
Brilliant.
Bravo.
Yes, sir. Right here.
My name is Robert Cruz. I'm a veteran. I was born and raised here in Oxnard, California. My thing is, and I'm not so much for, I know immigration is a big topic. It's not really a big topic with me, unfortunately. I'm not with the groomers, I'm sorry. With DACA, I just don't, I'm sorry, just don't believe in it. But my question is, how can the United States of America advocate to build the wall when we ask East Germany and the communist countries to tear down their wall? I don't understand that. And I've been, I've been, I've been, no. I think it was ordered, East Germany and West Germany. And I saw that wall. I saw those gates. I saw those dogs. I saw the minefields. I saw the guys in a tower. How can we do something like that when we ask that country to, those countries, the communist countries to tear down their wall?
Because that's the difference. That wall was built under the Communist Party. So, we have a wall to protect our government.
To keep people out. And we are a country of immigrants. I know that. Because everything...
We are.
You know, whether actually American citizens or the American Indians.
Okay.
Okay? Everybody else is an immigrant.
Having an open border, having an open border, having immigrants, you know, all this coming in now, having an open border. That's what we have. Has not worked. Open border has not worked for our country. It's actually endangering our community. That's a fact. Those are the facts. And we're spending money on top of that to take care of them. So, to protect our border, that's the same. We have to build a wall the entire distance. But if we go to Tijuana right now, if I take you there with a patrol, I can show you it's an open border.
And if you go to Washington State, you won't see one from Canada.
That's true.
Well, you won't see one from Canada. How many people are coming in from the Canadian side that we don't know? Where?
We need, we need better immigration, we need better laws and we need an immigration reform altogether.
Y'all wanna know that? And the border wall is just not for illegal immigrants or aliens, whatever you want to call them. Sex trafficking, drugs. Have you been involved with what's going on in our county?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're not pointing, I'm a Spanish, okay? I'm not. I was married to one. But I believe in, we're all created by God. But we have to protect our country, okay? And that is our concern. People have to wait, like Rolando did. They have to wait. We go to Mexico and break the law. We're thrown in jail, right? Nobody's saying that. Let's get our heads on it. Okay, let's get our heads. That's why we're not Mexico.
We are passionate.
That's why we're not Mexico.
We're passionate because we're labeling that only illegal immigrants are from Mexico.
That's right.
And that's not what we're talking about.
That's what our community has, so we need to...
Well, no, no. I'm sorry to tell you to disagree with you, ma'am. With all my respect, I have...
Your statistics. Fifteen percent of the twenty percent is racist.
They got order, order, come on. Take turns, take turns, something simple here.
I do understand that there are a lot of friends and people from Mexico or Ecuador. I understand that there's a lot from South America. I understand that there's a lot of Cubans that are being placed in Ecuador and traveling up north to come to the United States. I do agree that there's a lot of Asians that are coming. So, let's not make it passionate about Mexicans or from Mexican origin. We need to think and we need to be realistic about who's coming and not pinpoint one community.
Thank you.
I'm gonna change the topic a little bit just because this is another topic that also worries me as a mother, which is the increase of hate crimes against marginalized communities. According to the FBI and according to other organizations that have been keeping track of white supremacy hate crimes, there has been an increase from the election cycle up until now and it continues to increase. And the children, the people that are being targeted are children that look like mine. I have three brown kids. In addition to that, it's Muslims. It's people of color. It's Jews.
Yes.
It is the LGBTQ community. And honestly, I have witnessed some of this even in our communities. Out in Berry Park, we heard that there was some, some people that broke into the high school and aired the Hitler speech for two days in a row. We have seen swastikas that have been drawn in our parks. We have seen nooses that have been shown in public display at Ventura High School. And then we have the current, I believe it was like last week or the week before, of the African-American girl who was bullied. And there was some racial slurs that were given. So, the fact is that there has been power given to white supremacy ideals and thus it has caused these increase of hate crimes. For people that look just like people in this community. And this is all under this administration.
I just wanted to say, I think you're saying that because this is happening in Oxnard. I mean, we obviously have bad relationships. Some, some things that we need to flesh out. But in Oxnard during Hanukkah, little Rabbi's home was attacked and he lives in Hollywood Beach. So, that's another example. It's happening right here in Oxnard. It's happening toward you. It's happening to my daughter. She happens to be, you know, very bitya and a little hairy like her dad. So, she, unfortunately, she's been bullied. So, you're right. This is very unfortunate. How do we deal with it?
And it's happening across the country, not just on...
Yes, but thank you for bringing the point.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I'll do everything I can to work with law enforcement to place anything that protects the American people, protecting them at any time. But let's, let's put also perspective what's going on in our country. We have the fake media doing propaganda twenty-four hours a day of nothing positive.
That's right. You're right.
I don't think what it is, but it's always negative. Right now, my campaign is about helping the American people about being positive, about following the law and giving a chance for you guys to succeed in anything that you like to do. But we need to enforce the law. I'm very much against all that and surprising enough to maybe hear this, but the passion that is coming from me as a mother and as a local is, is awesome to me to see. And that's what I'm doing this for. Because we're gonna have these meetings on a weekly basis while I'm in office. Because I want to be, I want to hear your issues, what you care about, and we could do something about it. But at the end of the day, we gotta do it together. Because I'm gonna take your views over to Washington every single day to make things happen. It's some really hard, hard work. And you gotta stand up for what is right. And a lot of [bleep] congressmen, they don't stand up because they're afraid of the lawyers, their private interests, the money, and all this other stuff. I'm not doing this for the money. I left a beautiful career to come work for you, for the American people. That means to me more than anything else.
Mr. [inaudible]. So, I mean, I had a point to make, an observation. First of all, you talked about white supremacy. And I'm just curious, if we could anonymously in this room identify everybody here who we think is a white supremacist based just on visual? Because when you then went through a litany of what I described as minority populations, I'm among some of those minority populations. I wonder if you could guess which ones I am? That's just an rhetorical observation. The thing I also wanted to mention was a historical correction. And that is the Berlin Wall was built to keep a population in communism. It was not built to keep people out. It was built to control the population within the communist-lot nation.
A wall's a wall. A wall...[1614.44] A wall's a wall, no matter what.
Thank you, sir. Right here in the back in the black truck, your board. First of all, buenos dias.
Buenos dias, amigo.
Good morning. My name is Truinares, and I'm a licensed minister here in the community. I'm also a son of a mother that came here illegally and was able to take advantage of the amnesty process in Arizona. I'm a recovering drug addict and alcoholic. I've witnessed several forms of different kinds of abuse. So the only, the questions I have to ask with regards to your flyer, I see here that you want to end homelessness and fix mental health and addiction crisis, because that is one of the things that I had to overcome. Honestly, by trying to find how to be able to get help, I feel that our community, our city, our state doesn't do a really well job of helping the people that don't have any resources, or don't have the funding to get into a detox. How are you proposing to end homelessness, specifically because City of Oxnard is dealing with that a lot? And then also, how do you plan to fix the mental health and addiction crisis?
Well, going to the first question about the homelessness, we have to build jobs. We have to bring jobs to the community so people can go back to work. Now, we have unemployment that lasts a year, people are unemployed for a year. We have all these free this and free that. So if you're allowing people to stay off work and actually supplying them with money, why would they ever go back to work? It's the same thing with saying, you can go to America, you can get free healthcare, all you have to do is cross the border, and it's all paid for. You can't blame people from other countries coming here and taking advantage of it. Laws don't work, and the American people have to pay for it in every sense of the word. So we gotta do more by bringing jobs and pro jobs in this community, so people can go back to work. Going back to the addiction in general, I'm very passionate about this. I don't shy away from it. We're not doing enough. You know, we're not doing enough, we're prescribing medication. We're good at doing that. And there's a lot of them, and people aren't getting effective out of it. And we're not doing enough for actually the morals. The basics of our family structure is gone. The basic of our church is gone. The basic of our communities are gone, because people don't want to speak the truth. If you're for God, you're a bigot, or you're this, or you're against this, or it's always placing in this instead of saying, you know what? I want what's best for my community, I want to share how I feel. Let's find some common ground. Well, we're definitely not doing enough for the opioids epidemic, for the heroin epidemic that is taking over this county. And because the law enforcement don't have any tools to arrest, to do their job anymore. So a lot of these, a lot of these people are back on the street on the same day or a few days after, doing the same thing. We're not taking care of the American people, we're not helping them. Or if you do get arrested, you get sent to jail with no help whatsoever. Especially with addiction, which is a disease that is killing millions of people every single day. So I'll do more, and that's why I started True Hope Calling, and that's why I'm gonna be fighting for that, for sure.
I just wanted to follow up on the part about the media, because I am, I consider myself a social scientist, and there are social scientists that are actually working out, looking at variables in terms of what is considered propaganda and what is considered neutral. There is a webpage, AllGeneralizationsAreFalse.com, and in it you can see kind of like, you know, from the variables that they have used, what media stands kind of in the middle, and then you have things such as, what's to use liberal, what's to use conservative. For example, Occupy Democrats is a propaganda, contains misleading information, but so is Fox News. So, you know, I think it's important for all of us, and Fox News is actually considered entertainment, not news, that's what it says.
I'm sorry, but I'm just...
I'm just providing, I'm just providing what social scientists and the variables are being seen. I know you may not agree, but this is the data that's being...
Okay, let's talk about the facts, though, okay?
Yes, yes.
Let's talk about the emails, let's talk about Benghazi, let's talk about the facts.
Yes, facts.
When you promote, when you promote, but that's what you're talking about, because it goes back to the same thing, the propaganda on something that is not true. And we know now from the FBI, we know from the texts, we know from the emails, they made propaganda against his president from Day One, through things that were not true. He had nothing to do with Russia whatsoever. Those are facts. But still pursue it, and still do 24 hours on CNN saying, it's Russia's fault, it's Russia's fault. Russia had nothing to do with it. The voters voted, and we got somebody elected, based on our laws. So, yes, the American people are less smart, and also suggests this, the American people also bypassed that because we got elected, and that's the way it goes. So they can hear less about the propaganda. But what I'm saying is that when you're giving this propaganda 24/7 to the locals, to the community, we're not doing enough. We gotta know the truth and not the truth. There's a difference there.
Guys, I want to take two more questions, because let's make up count. The reason why is, after we finish here, I want to mingle and talk to each other, there's different points of views here, let's take advantage of that, let's not stay inside those, let's talk to each other, we're from different places here. So two more questions, Mr. Adaram, Mr. Vias, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Adaram.
My name is Manuel Herrera, I'm a Muslim, I'm a citizen for better Oxnard. And I'll be honest, I was surprised when I heard you were gonna be here, mainly because, I don't know if you heard, but Oxnard is a majority Latino population, and the majority of them despise Donald Trump and his agenda. So for you to be here, I mean, I gotta give you credit for that, okay? All right.
Let me say something about that specifically. I'm running my campaign, and Tony Soprano Jr. is his own man. I back the president, or the administration, or a government when I have to. But this campaign is about, it's about you, it's about the American people. I'm not here representing anybody else but you.
By the same token, though, you're pushing Trump's agenda. And as you know, again, as I mentioned, the Latino community here is powerful and is strong, and I know why you're here.
Right.
So, but, but just like Trump, I don't hear a lot of definite answers from you, solutions, as to what specifically are you gonna do for the Latino community and for the Oxnard.
Sure, let me say something. First of all, you say for an agenda for the American people. Second of all, second of all, what has the Democratic done for you, the Democratic Party done for you, for this community? Because every time I ask the locals, and I've been asking quite some time, they can't give me an answer. So this time, try something different. Try something that actually is gonna work for you, is gonna give you some answers, is gonna pick up the phone, is gonna take that meeting with you in Ventura County, not a year later, somewhere else. So what I want to do for the community, I want to do everything that they have done for six years. That's what I want to do.
Can you be more specific?
Yeah, I want to cut regulations, I want to lower taxes, I want to put pro-business. I'm for the Second Amendment, but I'm also for the police officers. I'm for the Latinos being taken care of and being human beings and not slaves. That's what I'm for.
But what's the civic area?
I want to abolish AD 109. I want to get rid of policies like that. I want pro-business. I want to work without a congressman who are actually for the same thing. I'm for the Constitution. I want to help our school system, they're not doing enough.
Now, if you get voted in, you're obviously gonna represent us as well. So ask our representatives, what are you gonna do as far as DACA, as far as immigration issues? What are you gonna do specifically?
I'm in for ending DACA at some point. I'm also putting a deal that we gotta keep these kids that were born here in this country. But wait a second, I can't do this alone, guys. A congressman cannot go and say, you know what, I'm gonna go to Congress and make this happen for you. We gotta do this together. The majority has to have it from you, not me. Do you want this congressman to be a hard guy who's never made mistakes to go there and make these promises? No. I hear what you guys have to do, but we gotta do it together, and it's gonna be a struggle every single day until we get the job done.
But if you say you're for the majority, and the majority of Latinos in Oxnard are for DACA, and you're against DACA, how are you...
No, no, I'm for ending DACA.
You're for ending DACA.
Yeah, at some point, we're gonna have to end it. Unless you want to keep it for the rest of your life and your children, I think it's unfair. But I think we need to start taking care of our community, we gotta bring business back here, we gotta make it easier for farmers to farm, to farm, because Mexico is farming a lot more than here, because they're doing a lot better job of it than we are here, because they're being regulated. You can't open any type of business in Oxnard, I'm very much against that. Why can't you? Why can't we bring more hotel rooms? Why can't we bring more people here to shop and go to the beach? Why can't we make this a vacation spot? Why? Are we shy from it? No, I want to bring, I want to make Ventura County the best community in America. I believe we can.
Last question, Mr. Vias, go ahead.
Yes, uh... My father's been in this community since the 1890s, and I've seen California go, and the last few decades, I've seen probably a new song, it's economic power. I know where the sixth power in the world we could be, probably the third power in the world. But I think what's affecting our small businesses, I'm talking about small businesses now, we can't compete with other states when it comes to federal grants, or not, federal competition, because of all the regulations in this state. We've lost a lot of major companies, like Toyota and other companies, to other states because of regulations. And I know you can't do everything by yourself, but do you have a game plan to kind of reduce the regulations that we have here? Because small businesses can't compete with other businesses in Kansas or Texas, because these government contracts, they can be lowered if we can't.
Yeah, we gotta lower the regulations.
We can't compete.
And I'm gonna fight together with the regulations as low as possible, to make it easier to open up shop. That's what I'm gonna fight for. And it's gonna be, we have to do it together. Like I said, we have to combine our efforts as a community, if we really care about this, and make it happen, so I can go to Washington and get the job done. I only have two years, plus I have to run the next campaign, I understand. But I think you need a representative who actually is willing to fight and put the time and effort into it, my entire campaign, my entire registration. I can get the people that are close to us, as far as states, in Texas, Nevada, Arizona, I can work with them, because I already know them. Maybe we can learn from Florida. Florida's a great state as far as regulations. They're spending a lot less than we are on immigration alone. They got something, I'm working really closely with them, because they're doing something right with immigration and regulations. So that's what I'm trying to do, and that's what I'm gonna try to do with them, for sure.
Just one last question for the record. So, Mr. Sowak, Jr., just for the record, I'm currently a moderator for a group that we started, believe, for gun violence, anti-gun violence in our community. It's called Do Better, parentless, against Ventura County. Just for the record, if elected, do you promise not to take any money from the NRA?
I promise it. I promise to take, I don't want to take any money from anything that's gonna endanger you, you know?
Okay, so...
Of any kind, it doesn't matter what it is.
So if you promise not to take any money from the NRA, what opinion do you have in regards to the politicians currently who take millions, including our president?
Including a lot of Democrats as well.
Yes.
That goes for both parties. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not those guys. I'm not, I'm not a career politician, nor do I want to become one. I want to become a people's person, that gets the job done for you. I'm not doing this for selfish reasons, like most politicians, and then they walk away from the political world, billionaires. I'm not doing this for the money, guys, I'm doing this because I'm proud American, and I know what you guys need, but we're doing it together, because I am a father. I am an American citizen, I am an immigrant, like most of you guys.
So Trump took $30 million from the NRA.
Why is it so real, Trump?
So I, because he is our president, and we're pretty powerful. So why, what campaign do you have? We also have an A-plus candidate, Steve Nein, who took some money from the NRA. So, you know, as a mother, I am concerned in terms of which politicians are being controlled by the NRA and which are not. So that is why you need to ask about President Trump, because he is an hour, he did take $30 million.
You know what? I'm a businessman here, I've been in Oxnard my whole entire life, you know? You know, my brother-in-law owns a construction company. But let me finish. You own a construction company, and we also run some accounting firms. You know how many Mexicans I take back to Mexico? Probably thirty or forty a month. So people that tell me that, you know what, they're not criminals, not all of them are criminals, but some of them are. That's why we gotta protect our borders, for that.
And now, now I would respectfully ask, respectfully ask you to know that there are people here who don't agree with your discussion about Donald Trump, and that's not why we're here, to talk or bash one side or the other. We're trying to understand what the candidates are offering us, so that we can go home and make our own decisions.
I don't know. I get tired of living in my mailroom, being charged by the Senate of California, from EDD, from the other agencies, because they want to, they want to fine me, they want to tax me because I'm doing good in business. I fucking hate watching mail for that.
My thing, my thing, I'm gonna end this for you, and then I'll make it really simple. The NRA is not giving guns to the criminals. The criminals are getting guns, not from the NRA. They're getting guns and trucks and knives. More killings are happening in America by knives. Let's ban knives, let's ban cars, let's ban our free speech, let's ban everything. Guns have been in this country for 200 years.
Guns don't...
Millions of people all know. Let's get all, let's, let's get all the guns away from people. The bad guys will have guns. How do we protect ourselves? Why do we get, we have the right to protect ourselves at any given moment? Do we have the right? And I believe we do.
We do.
This is just a comment. In Cuba, they took away all the guns from the people, and what happened? Uncle Fidel became what? The president. You want that in here? We have it now.
Listen, my, my girlfriend lives in Miami. She escaped Cuba. She's Cuban. They were on a raft for three months, okay? And they were found, and they made it here to this country. We know about Communist Party, my family. We don't want it here. We have a Second Amendment, we have 27 beautiful amendments. Let's fight for them, together. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. Please, welcome to stand, and mingle, and talk to each other. We had a powerful discussion today, and this is the first of many that we need to have. We need to work together to solve the problems our community is facing, because we are better together. So let's unite, Democrats, Republicans, Republicans, and we'll make Ventura County a better, safer place. And feel free to be here, I appreciate it.